Okay, thank you very much to Will Moore and Joe LaCava, candidates for District One City Council, for joining us today. I'm just gonna start by briefly laying out the ground rules for you gentlemen. We're recording this and we'll share it with the public later. The board kind of met ahead of time and talked out the questions we want to ask you. But I'll be generally starting the questions in the interest of speed and brevity to move things along. There'll be a chance for board members to ask follow-up questions. And because this is a Zoom world, if you see us, you know, looking at our phones or our laptops is because we're fact-checking some of the stuff in real time that you are telling us. So that's a part of this too. Thanks again. Why don't we start by telling us, how long have you each lived in the district? And how would you describe it for us? And Joe, why don't you go first?
Okay, well, thank you, Matt, and thank you for this opportunity. And by the way, congratulations on your new appointment there. I've lived in the district for about 35 years now. And I see the district as somewhat unique of the nine council districts. It has an extraordinary coastline, being the northwest corner of our city. It has a major employment center where some of our newest economy is being built in this city. And we finally have the expansion of the Blue Line Trolley as it extends northly from Old Town. We have our older communities of Delmar Heights, University City, and La Jolla. And we have our newest communities in our city, Carmel Valley, Pacific Highlands Ranch, and Torrey Hills in Delmar Mesa. So it is a diverse group that probably has some of the most extraordinary open space, dedicated open space to give us a little more breathing room, protect natural habitat, and of course, our coastal bluffs, as I mentioned, are beaches. So I'll stop there with that little snapshot.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I appreciate you being brief. I just, I didn't say this at the outset, but if you could keep your answers, you know, short, that'll help us get through a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on in the city right now. Will, how about yourself?
Excellent. I've been in the district for about a decade and a half, lived in Carmel Valley and University City that entire time. My son attended Ocean Air Torrey Pines High School. Currently, he's upstairs doing some distance learning. Right at this moment, he's a junior. And so I think this community has our, some of our model neighborhoods, your wind and sea, your dense walkable urban communities that we all kind of aspire to. If the rest of the city looked like that, we wouldn't have a housing crisis. We have Carmel Valley, which is my home, where we have this diverse array of great families and folks are, I've found, very concerned about where their kids are gonna live and how the city is gonna look in 30, 50 years. And we want to make a new San Diego, and I think this is where we start to do it.
How, and obviously, this is an unusual campaign. The pandemic has changed everything. I think this is gonna be a record for the fewest doors knocked on in a city election in history. How, let me ask you specifically, how has the pandemic changed your approach to housing and to transportation? And Will, why don't you go first?
Well, the pandemic is something that's gonna be, and this is something that really just happens in human societies about every hundred years, so we have to be aware of it. This era is gonna be a new era. I have myself lived in three eras. I'm 47 years old. Junior year of high school, walked into the school, they said that you watched the news last night. It was November 9th, I think, 1989. The Cold War had ended, right? Tuesday, September 11th, I was at law school at Columbia, and the post-Cold War era had ended. And that 9/11 era has gone towards the present. And I think this coronavirus crisis, crisis as well as the other crises our nation faces, are the breakpoint between two eras. And we need to consciously build how we're going to do, how we're going to create our world in the future. And I think that my approach to housing, where we just need more places for people to live, and we can move the deck chairs around and subsidize this and subsidize that. But the fact is, if you have 10 people and nine places to live, somebody's living outside. We need to recognize our need for more housing in all of our communities. I go and talk to these folks door-to-door. I go and, and I did more than, more of that than probably any other candidate in the city in the primary. And what I found was people are very concerned about where their children are going to live. Our kids can't afford to live in San Diego. Our recent graduates, our UCSD graduates, one of the great jewels of our District One, can't stay in the district. They all live in Vista and they commute back and forth. And that's a real tragedy because we're taking our future from our kids. And so we need to plan responsibly for what the city is gonna look like in 2020, 2030, 2040, 2050, and stop trying to make it look like it did in 1970.
So do you support more housing, less housing, different types of housing? I mean, the pandemic has, in some ways, we were moving towards building up, building dens, building their trolley stops. And now people, you know, moving away from sprawl. And now maybe someone doesn't want to live with a bunch of people surrounding them if there's gonna be a chance for a virus.
Yeah, the choice, and we found that, you know, South Korea did the best job of dealing with this thing. It's one of the densest societies in the world. Density is not what transmits the virus. Now, crowding transmits the virus. Economic difficulty transmits the virus because you gotta go to your job where maybe they're not being very safe. But if you have three or four families living in one place, which we have some places in San Diego, you're going to get a lot more danger than if you have three apartments where three different families live. So it's not, density is not something that generates this viral problem. Crowding is. So we do need more housing, we need more different kinds of housing, and we need to get away from this approach where folks who just want things to be the same as it always was are going to take any opportunity to frighten people about what the future's gonna look like.
Joe, how about you? Has the pandemic changed your approach to housing or transportation?
Sure. Yeah, I think it heightens a lot of issues that I've been talking about on this campaign trail. But, you know, a complex question, and with a short amount of time, was talked about a couple of things. One, I think it will open the eyes of a lot of businesses who were maybe afraid to look at, you know, remote workers, as you mentioned at the opening, Matt. And now people are gonna be a little more comfortable about that. And I think we may have some excess office space, and maybe some of the taller buildings in which we can repurpose them as residential. We saw two great examples here recently in La Jolla, in which office buildings were converted to residential very successfully and with the full support of the community. I think what we're also gonna see is, we already recognize that we have extraordinary pressure in delivering housing for those working families that are moderate and low-income levels. And I think we're gonna see additional pressure on that, depending on how the pandemic continues to affect the economy and how we're gonna come out of that economy. So I think we're gonna have to redouble our efforts. We haven't been very successful in the past about meeting the needs of those lower-income families. We have created a two-tier economy, which is workable if you can create a two-tier housing program, which, again, we have failed to do. And the other thing is that, as our climate action plan focused on trying to move folks out of single occupancy cars into transit and bike, and we really never accounted for a sizable percentage of people simply not commuting and staying at home and doing the work from there. I moved my home office into my place so I don't have to commute. And so I think that would become a sizable portion of moving folks off the freeways and helping meet our climate action plan goals. So I think there's a lot of intersectionality as we come out of the pandemic. And I think, you know, we have to remember, people make housing choices not out of science and facts, they base it on perceptions and their own personal agenda. So those people that are moving or looking now for single-family homes do that, not because there's a science of how the pandemic works, but because of their personal choices. But the reality is, we don't have the opportunity to spread any further than we have with our single-family neighborhoods. We've kind of locked that program in, and now it is simply a matter of adjusting as we see the economy change and people start making decisions.
How, and I don't wanna go in a great detail, but just a yes or no on Measure A, the $900 million housing bond. Do you support that? Yes or no? Joe?
Yes.
I have, I have some real concerns about a $900 million tax that's gonna promise 7,500 units when we need, over 10 years, when we need 11,000. I'll probably vote for it, but I, I think that we shouldn't get the impression that that's gonna solve too many problems. That's not where our problems lie.
Let me actually, I know I said one word, but let me follow up. Why would you not support it and then vote for it?
No, no, I have some skepticism about whether that's gonna be something that over-promises what that's gonna accomplish. $900 million sounds like a lot of money, and when you vote for $900 million, well, that's problem solved. But that $900 million, they're promising, frankly, not that many units over, they're probably one year of our deficit over a course of 10 years. So we have a lot of work to do. And the money that we're talking about is not the major problem. The major problem is the impediments we've put in our system to housing. And throwing money at, to overcome impediments that we ourselves have put in place doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It looks like it's what we're gonna have to do, so I'll probably vote for it, but I do that with that caveat.
But when we interviewed you guys over the winter, neither of you would acknowledge the structural impediment that's the worst is CEQA, and union-supportive CEQA to extract whatever they want. So if you guys won't take on that, how are we ever gonna get to more housing?
Well, Chris, I don't recall me saying that, and, and, you know, let me know if I did. But I've been in favor of reforming CEQA this entire time because specifically of this problem where we have, where we have, every project has this two-year delay for just litigation. And yeah, I think we need state CEQA reform. There are things we can do at the local level that get that done. But we have folks that pretend to be environmentalists and are just people that are trying to keep their neighborhood exactly the same it was in 1970. And, you know, environment is not the main motivation of that. CEQA was a great idea back in the 90s, and it's a great idea now, except it does need some reforms. And I've been strong being pro-CEQA reform the entire time.
Matt, can I jump in here at any point in the conversation? To your earlier point, since, since my colleague here went on about a, one of the things that I acknowledge is that during the pandemic, it's a tough time to do a tax increase. But just because we pass it in November doesn't mean it automatically gets triggered. I'm gonna have a heavy hand to make sure that we don't start selling those bonds and imposing additional tax until the economy's at a good place. And the other part of that is that it's going to replace a lot of money that we're throwing at the homeless challenge that is not very effective, that doesn't, hasn't moved the needle in terms of actually getting people off the streets or out of temporary bridge structures. So it's an important component. And what it also does is leverage matching state and federal grants that we are missing out on. It is one tool of many tools that we need to use. And that's the reason I'm supporting Measure A. To Chris's point, you're absolutely right about the impact CEQA can have as a destructive tool rather than its original and important goal. But the way to really deal with that, especially within a city that has primarily defined its urban limits and it's primarily built out, the way to get, dealing with CEQA is to do those master plan CEQUAs when you do your community plan updates and increase the number of buy-right development. And most developers figure out that I'll stick with the buy-right options and densities that I'm allowed and not trigger CEQA changes. And a lot of the issues that the state has made that affect CEQA, I think, are important changes that help us accomplish the goal of building within our urban fabric. And in that sense, I think we've actually achieved a lot of the things that you're concerned about. Maybe not everything, but I think we've achieved a lot in that direction. If people continue to focus and implement correctly the tools that CEQA gives us in moving, moving our city forward.
And just, just for the benefit of, benefit of readers, they can go back and look at our long interviews from March where we go into that. My recollection is that Joe said CEQA was a kind of a non-starter, and Will said ultimately, we're gonna have to do CEQA reform, which we mentioned in an editorial. We're gonna come back and, yeah, we're gonna come back and talk about housing and homelessness, obviously huge issues, but staying on the theme of the pandemic first. One of the other things that has changed in the last six months has been racial justice protests that have swept the nation, including San Diego. And you both have written op-eds for us, essays for us on defunding the police and that, that concept, which is more complicated than those three words suggest. But let me ask you first about the police department. There were a lot of people who asked for $100 million to be taken out of that department, which is a third of the city's general fund, and the police is a third of the city's workforce. Taking $100 million out would mean fewer police. But I want to ask you specifically, in this moment, how would you approach the city's police department budget? Would you look to reduce it, and how? And Joe, why don't you go first?
Okay, you know, this is a conversation that I've been having for a few years down at City Hall, both as a community leader, as well as sitting on the Police and Community Relations Board. And as you said, Matt, the organizing tools that people use, you know, defend the police $100 million, are good to organize and energize people to finally begin to wrap their heads around what has been a very longstanding problem that wasn't able to get traction for the larger population. So as others have said, we're hopefully be able to turn this moment into a movement here. What I'm looking for is, I've been a big believer in community-oriented policing. And I have stated in the past that we need to increase the number of police so that we can get them out of their cars and walking their beats and making those personal one-on-one connections with residents and businesses. San Diego used to be a leader in community-oriented policing, and I'd like to see us get back to that. But in terms of the budget, one of the things I think the average San Diegan has learned is how incredibly complex our budget is, and that we don't even begin to understand the complexities within it. And so there's now a movement afoot to actually start to break the budget apart so we understand when you say, "Take $100 million," what does that actually mean? It does feel like it's just about the personnel, since that's often the biggest part of any service department.
Well, it's 85% of the police budget is, not interrupt you, but 85% of the police budget is wages and benefits.
Exactly. What we're also looking for is, and what there seems to be unanimous support for, is realizing that we've put too much pressure on the police to solve some of our social problems. And I'm excited that we're finally getting some traction down at the County of San Diego to take on their responsibility to deal with some of the social ills that police officers are not really equipped to deal with or trained to deal with. Those people with social, excuse me, mental crisis, health crises that are really looking for someone who can support them and move them in a positive direction. And that will take additional pressure off of that. But we're not looking at a strict cut, but it forces a conversation that is long, long overdue. And with my work on police community relations that I started, we issued a report last year that, at the time, was pretty controversial, and now seems rather benign with some of the demands that are being made. So I look forward to engaging in that conversation, getting the right budget, getting the right amount of public safety in each of our neighborhoods, and turning this conversation around, a long overdue conversation.
A couple of quick follows before we move to Will. There were 30 recommendations in that effort you're talking about. How many of those have been implemented at City Hall?
I would argue none. Some of them, arguably, the department actually did implement, so maybe there's a handful that was done. We've, because of the pandemic, we've kind of interrupted our conversations with the department on a recommendation-by-recommendation basis. But it was a particularly frustrating basis. You know, we brought back the SDSU traffic stop study to get the city council and the mayor to pay attention to that. And if not adopted, there are 10 recommendations, so at least begin to consider some of those recommendations. You know, we can't keep studying racial profiling and ignoring the consistent recommendations that come out of there. The 30 that we came up with that covered anything from training and recruitment and curbing and preemptive stops, really, I think that's one of the things that needs to be picked up. Those are the kinds of things, the lack of response is really what hurts the conversation and building the credibility and transparency and accountability at our city and with the department.
Let me ask you about that, because you not only were a member of that board, you were the vice chair. So what responsibility do you take for those recommendations not being embraced? Should or could you have fought harder for those early on? It seems like that the community has really risen up and is forcing some of these changes now, after the killing, since the killing of George Floyd and the protests that have taken place all over the nation. But why didn't you take a more active role to force these changes back in 2019?
Well, that's a fair question, Matt. You know, you sit on these advisory boards, they are advisory. You do your good work, and then you put it out there. As I mentioned, we were in conversations, and we were, you know, we had a mayor that was totally non-responsive to this. We did have conversations with the chief and his staff, and we pushed and continued to push. And then we, we simply could not get the job done. I'll, as a reminder, the change in the carotid restraints and the de-escalation policy that were adopted earlier this year, that was a three-year battle. And it really shows the intransancy of both the department and the mayor's office in their unwillingness to accept thoughtful recommendations and to work with the community to implement what mostly is common sense things that really could have a positive effect on community relations. And frankly, Matt, that's part of the reason that I've decided to run. I've appreciated all the good work I've been able to do as a part-time community leader and volunteer, but it clearly needs time to step up as a full-time council member and give a greater voice to these issues so that we can continue to push, build consensus across the council, work with whoever is the next mayor, and actually start making these changes happen instead of just constantly talking about them.
And a quick follow-up. In, in the earlier campaign, you had said that you support fully staffing and equipping the police department. So that would make me think that you don't support cutting their budget, but you support actually increasing it. Is that the case?
You know, I did support the pay increases because it was quite clear that we could not keep our police officers based on salaries that were not competitive with adjoining cities in the sheriff's department. And we were losing officers to Riverside, where most of them live, because they just couldn't afford to continue to commute. I did, I'm not gonna run away from that. I did support, it is part of the process of community-oriented policing to have the right amount of staff to be able to do that. And so I do support the demilitarization of the police department has, has been highly visible now. But I'm not gonna shy away from the fact that I think we need to have a fully-staffed police department. And I've talked to some of my more progressive supporters about my logic in that. And I think the community will be better served when we have that independent community review board, when we have more accountability and transparency, and when we start to see the positive effects of repositioning how the police actually conduct public safety and how the county partners with us. And I think it is a good marriage between the two that gets beyond the organizing language that is being used now, because the issue is there. When you have the racial profiling, when you have a systemic racism, when you have the training that, that is more aggressive rather than more of a guardian philosophy, the number of police is not really the issue. It is really how the community and the police interact.
Thanks for your patience, Will. How, to the top question, how is the pandemic, excuse me, the protests changed your view of policing in America, and particularly in San Diego? And how would you approach the budget?
Well, I will start by saying that the, the current protests are not new protests. The, these things, this was going on in 1968, five years before I was born. I watched this happen outside my window in Atlanta in 1992, on April 29th and 30th, 1992. We watched all this happen in 2015. These issues are not new. And we shouldn't treat them as new as something we, we haven't seen before. Now, one difference I am seeing, and I mentioned this in my editorial, which I hope everybody will go read, is that people are starting to take more responsibility for themselves and, and for their actions that create this systemic problems we have with race in America. One thing that I want to make sure we don't do is say, "Oh, that's the police over there, they're the problem." Because the police do what we tell them to. The police follow the instructions we give them from City Hall. And throughout America and throughout history, that has often not been fantastic. And in addition to that, we have used the police as a tool to do things that the police have nothing to do with, to deal with our homelessness problem, to deal with poverty, to deal with mental illness. And that's not something that we have fashioned our police force to deal with as effectively as we could. But we've sent them off to just take care of the symptoms, the fact that we haven't dealt with those problems in a more forthright way. And so my, what I advocate for is to, for all of us to take responsibility for ourselves, because we see that it's not just the police force. Fortunately, here in San Diego, we live in, and I said this in the first interview, and I'll say it again, the safest large city in American history. This is, crime is as low as it's ever been historically, and we are the lowest crime-large city in America. And we need to recognize that, so people don't start to get scared, because I think fear is a bad, a bad thing to have in your mind when you're talking about these issues. We need to work towards a more just, equal, and integrated society from top to bottom. And we say, "Oh, it's the police over there." That just takes responsibility away from us. After I wrote the editorial that I wrote for you guys, that basically had this theme, the mayor of, former mayor of Minneapolis wrote a much better editorial saying what I was trying to say much more effectively over in the New York Times a couple of weeks later, and I would hope people would take a look at that. But as long as we're a community that says, "No, we gotta keep our, keep people out of our neighborhood anytime," we are a community that says, "Oh, I just saw somebody whose skin was a little darker walking down the street, so I'm gonna either call the police or type that into next door." We're not going to make that progress. We need to look at ourselves. As far as the police budget goes, you know, you talk to the police, you talk to the, the actual rank-and-file police officers, they know they're doing things, that they're, they're being asked to do things that they are not equipped for as well as they could be. You know, they've had some trainings, and they have confidence in themselves as professionals, that they can go out and take care of issues as they arise. But they know there are better ways to do it. So whether it's uniformed officers that are equipped differently, whether it's mental health professionals going out and dealing with some of these quality-of-life concerns, those are approaches that we need to change. Because right now, we have fashioned the police into this hammer, and every problem looks like a nail, and we need to have a broader approach. So does that mean the police department budget changes? Or does it mean the police department budget morphs to take care of a lot of different, different issues in a different way? It could be either of those things. But what we need to do is refocus the blame to point at ourselves and think about how we're thinking about the world, and refocus our police spending so that it actually deals with the problems that are underlying. We actually have a better quality of life in San Diego.
There's been a really effective counterattack on the defund police argument with people saying that at most, 15% of Americans support this. That's why Biden has ducked it. But I don't think there's nearly enough appreciation of kind of the radical ideas that are at play on the other side of this. The California Commission on Peace Officers Standards and Training has for years said that, of course, police officers have a duty to intervene when they see their colleagues using inappropriate force. And yet, the legislature refused to pass a bill last month, or earlier this month, that would have reaffirmed this. That's a radical idea, that police aren't supposed to act against wrongdoing by their colleagues. And so I just feel kind of like a hopeless sense on this issue, because both sides are pushing ideas that should be out of the norm.
I, I think that, I think probably Joe and I might both agree, I'd be surprised if we don't, that that's, that you're right. That's something that, that I think most police officers would agree. They should be protected if they intervene to make sure that something happens better, the citizen gets a better outcome from the police department, and if they don't, I don't think anybody's gonna disagree with you. Why that didn't pass the legislature? Honestly, I, after the last couple of weeks, I don't want to answer for a lot of what the legislature does, because it hasn't been, some of it was good, but some of them didn't work out very well, so.
Well, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit confused when you say, "Police do what we tell them," because in many instances across the country, including Minnesota, since you mentioned Minnesota, nobody told those police officers to put their knee on someone and kill them. So I'm a little bit confused by that phrase that you're using.
I appreciate you, you asking me about that. When we say the police, when I say the police do what we tell them, we, in the rest of our society, also do things like that all the time. It's saying, you know, George Zimmerman was not a police officer. The guy who shot fell in Brunswick, Georgia, was not a police officer. Those are just reflections of our society. We have, you know, police that aren't great, but we have people that aren't great. And we need to recognize that, you know, saying those guys over there are the problem is what got us into this situation in the first place. So when I say they do what we tell them to, well, yeah, obviously, rules get broken, and people do things that we absolutely think are reprehensible. But we need to recognize, in order to solve that problem, we're not gonna do that unless we take what we can control, which is what we, the situations we instruct the police to go into, tactics we give them, the training we give them, all plays into that kind of situation. And also, the protections we give people when they, when they don't do the right thing plays into that situation as well. If that camera hadn't been there, we would never know. Right? Those reports came out, and, and they would've gotten away with it. And that suggests they'd been getting away with it for a long time. And that's what I mean when we, when I say, "We tell them they can." Well, that's really a signal that if you can get away with that, that's us telling them they can, and we need to stop doing that. Is that...
To clarify some of the things... I clarify some of, some of the things that you said, so thank you.
Specifically, the police chief, do you support retaining him? Joe?
I, I don't think it's appropriate to discuss personnel matters of these kinds of forums. So I'll, I'll take a pass on that one, Matt.
I, I think Joe answered that question verbatim the way I would. So yeah, I don't think that, saying we should, I'm not going to come out here and say we should fire the police chief.
Let me reframe the question. What do you think of the job that he's done in the last six months? Joe?
I, you know, I think he's in a very tough situation, both in terms of the protests, as you mentioned. As well as the pandemic and how that has pulled them in different directions. I'm grateful that they ceded to the prohibition on the carotid restraints. And then adopted effective, ineffective de-escalation policy. But I think they were a little bit slow. I think we should demand more of our chief and more proactive in seeing some of the issues. And adopting those before things get such a tragic situation and kind of force some kind of response. Those were two good things, but there is so much more that needs to be done. And I'd like, I'd like to see him do better.
Will?
I think, I think the chief has done a reasonably good job of recognizing that we have problems in, in our city. And in our department that we need dealing with. We've done some, some good reforms. Now, those reforms come from activists who push our society forward. You know, folks don't get on, get out in the street and start yelling about these things, carotid restraint doesn't happen. And that's the way these changes get made. I'd like to see a, I'd, I'd like to see leadership that takes, takes the lead and makes those changes without people having to get out in the street. I'd like to see leadership that takes the lead in making sure that our, our policing, especially as regards protests. And this has improved over, over the intervening months. Is going to be something that's de-escalatory, that's going to have safe protests. And I would like to see that kind of leadership. I think it's getting there, but, but I, obviously we need to be doing better.
We've talked about traffic stops and pretext stops. Everyone has read or heard about the SDSU study. Is the police department systemically racist? Joe?
I think there is evidence of racial profiling. The whole concept of systemic racism means that pervades everything, every action, every words that we use. The way we think about things that pervades as, as others have said. But clearly the racial profiling, you know, whether you want to talk about the SDSU study. Or whether you want to talk about the ACLU study, we keep coming with the same conclusions there. That there seems to be something systemic about the way pretext stops are being handled. And we need to make some common sense changes to really relook at how we do that. And that goes also with training and policies that are actually effective and make it clear to the rank and file about what their responsibility is. And so there is racial profiling in the pretext stops. We need to change that.
A question to you, Will. Thanks for answering that with some solutions to Joe. Will, do you think the department is systematically racist? And what would you do about it?
I think we'd have trouble saying that there's any institution in American society that's not. And I think that, I think we need to recognize that as well. Our housing system, the way we set up our neighborhoods, the way we. Put together our, you know, subsidies for, for businesses, top to bottom, soup to nuts. We have major problems that we need to look at. You know, the way we set up our schools, the way we set up our, just all of them. So absolutely yes, and we need to take a strong affirmative look at that. Because if we don't take responsibility for ourselves and where we come into the world. And participate in these structures ourselves and obviously the city council, which tells the police department what the, what the laws are. Has a big role in that as vis a vis the police department. But not just that, unless we take responsibility through our society, we're going to continue to have these divisions. And it's not enough to just say, oh, I think racism is bad. I didn't do that one thing. What did you do to work against it within your own life in the past week, year, month? And that's when we're going to start making progress. When we point the finger and say, oh, those police over there, they're the problem. I'm fine. I'm good. Nothing I do in my all white community seems to be advancing this racism problem. That's what I'm afraid we're, we're doing when we, when we good liberals near the coast start pointing the finger at police. And I think it just distracts from ourselves and, and doesn't make us take responsibility for the way our community works.
Let me try another yes, no question on measure B, the police commission. Joe, you said you support it?
Yes.
And Will?
Yes.
Okay.
The thing didn't come through, but yes.
Thank you. A question on, on, on housing, specifically homelessness. The convention center is being used right now. Lots of people have cycled through there. Some are getting housed, some are getting support. There's talk now of closing it. How do we move or do we move away from the convention center? When do we move away from convention center and where does the city turn next? Do we go back to big tents or do we do something different? And Will, why don't you take this one first?
Well, I think insofar as there are not conventions, which is the world we're going to live in for a while. I don't see any reason we shouldn't continue using the convention center system that's actually working reasonably well right now. I think there are some folks that, you know, want to get us back to work, but unless you actually have a convention coming to town. Which everybody, nobody in the actual convention world thinks is happening. I think it's a, I, I think it's a little pie in the sky to think that we need to be out of there by, you know, mid-December or something like that. That doesn't make any sense. So we'll keep the convention center going for as long as there aren't conventions that want to be there. I think that we have some hiccups in the housing program, getting people from, especially people who are at higher risk. Into the hotel rooms. I would like to see that addressed. But as we shut that convention center down, I don't think the tent, the temporary solution idea works. Mayor Faulkner called them bridge shelters. And I would say that a bridge that doesn't go anywhere is a pier. And that's not the solution to our housing problem. We need to get people off the street. But as long as we have a massive shortage in amount of housing, we're going to have a homelessness problem. We have people, and, and some people talk about mental illness and addiction, that's about a third of our homeless population, maximum a half. But we have people working in full-time jobs in this town, living in their cars. And that's wrong. If you work a full-time job, you should be able to afford your rent. And that's because we've spent the last thirty years not building enough housing just for our own natural population growth. Just for our own kids to live in. So people are having to, you know, raise their grandkids on Skype when they're living out in, in Flagstaff, and that's not the way we want to be. So we can talk about, you know, hotels and all these programs to deal with homelessness. Unless there's someplace for somebody to live, we're going to continue to have this problem. And we can solve it with these indirect ways that are very, very expensive and don't end up having a big long-term impact. Or we can get right at it and reform our housing system so we can get housing built for us San Diegans.
Joe, what are your thoughts on the convention center and the bridge, the bridge shelters?
Well, this is another indication of who we are as a city. You know, the response when the pandemic hit to move individuals out of the bridge shelters into the convention center was certainly the right thing to do. How long they stay in the convention center, I think it really is, really going to be driven by the pandemic. It is arguably the safest place for those individuals where you can get the physical separation there. So that remains to be determined on how that pandemic plays out. But here is another explanation of where we have really failed to address the needs of the homeless. Where we have once again spent a lot of time and money on studies that keep saying the same thing over and over again, and that we don't really do anything about it. I'm hearing some talk about buying motels and converting them to permanent supportive housing or as a tool for rapid rehousing. But let's see if we actually deliver on that. You know, we, for the, some of you with longer memories, we had this conversation during the housing recession. Where we said, let's pick up these distressed properties in apartment buildings and use that for income restricted housing. And as far as I know, I don't know that we even picked up five units during that period. So we failed to do that. We've identified housing first as the only solution nationwide that can actually address the needs of those who are homeless. For whatever reason that they are, have become homeless. And what do we do? We say, great, we got a program. Let's do another study. That comes back to the same conclusion about housing first, and we have not taken the steps. That's one of the reasons that I'm supporting that measure eight. It is going to be a step towards that construction. As Chris points out, we have yet to tackle the expensive cost of delivering income restricted housing. And I'm happy to talk about that. But, you know, these folks will, you know, there's also been a disruption. We haven't talked too much about that. There's been a disruption because of the pandemic. People that were on a path to get into housing or section eight vouchers were cast aside. As opposed to let's deal with the folks that are actually in the convention center, give them a path into some kind of housing. So, you know, we're, again, as a city, we're really handling the issue very, very poorly. We're not making progress. And we're throwing a ton of money at it. It's time to stop that. It's time to stop studying. It's time to move into action and be much more aggressive. In the delivery of income restricted housing, figure out a way to knock down the cost substantially. Talk about rapid rehousing. And then the other part of it that I just don't hear enough from our leaders is a better explanation of who these folks are that are homeless. And what makes them homeless? It breaks my heart where they assume that they're just people that are lazy, that are people just on, on drugs. There is a whole universe of reasons that people become homeless. And, and let's not forget the hidden homeless, families that are doubling or tripling up because they can't afford to rent on their own. So it's a very complex issue. We have really failed in being able to attract that. I look forward to being on the council and, and actually turning those talks and reports into actual action.
I haven't heard anybody say anything about rent control yet. There's a number of measures, local measures. There's a statewide measure about rent control. So I'd like to hear both your opinions on whether that is an effective way to attack this issue.
Should I go first or?
Sure.
Go for it. That's how you started talking. I'm not in support of rent control. It has been proven to actually be counterproductive. I have talked about being supportive of rent stabilization. As you may recall, we actually have a state bill that is in effect right now with rent stabilization. It has a short life and it gives us an opportunity to say, we've talked a lot about it. It's now in place. Let's see how it plays out. The pandemic, of course, is a little bit disruptive in that five-year, I believe it's a five-year test period. But we have an opportunity to say, we don't need to be talking about this until we actually see how it manifests itself. In terms of delivering the housing that we need. Does it really control what kind of unintended impact, impacts does it have? So again, to answer your question, Andrew, I'm not in support of rent control. I am in support of a well-crafted rent stabilization program.
Will?
Yeah, well, this is, this is one of those places where I got really beat up in the progressive community during the primary, especially. Because Joe's position at the time was very much pro Prop ten from last time and rent control oriented. And the, and the super far left, the Democratic Party, even as recently as last month. And we had the Democratic Party vote was, was yelling about how Will, Willmore doesn't support rent control. And, and Joe's your rent stabilization is now what's being called, guys. So I've been consistent about this throughout the campaign. Rent control, we tried a generation ago. It doesn't work. It pulls up the ladder for the folks who are already here and takes the, takes the process and makes it. You know, we're taking care of the people who are already in, in a place, but it doesn't actually do anything, anything to solve our housing crisis. So that our kids have places to live, our homeless people can move into housing. They're not rent controlled. So this rent control idea I think is so misguided. I get where, you know, you get these increases in, in rents that really focus the mind on how bad our housing crisis is. But I don't think this is a good idea, and I've consistently said, even before audiences where it was not popular. That this is not the way we want to go. I'm glad Joe's come around to the, to the proper, what I think is the, the correct opinion. But I wish he'd been here the whole campaign.
And just for the record, I have been, so.
I was going to ask you to respond, but you just did. So thank you. Thank you for doing it quickly.
That's been my, my, what I said to you today is what I.
Just flatly fall, I have heard you repeatedly say in the primary, I supported Prop ten, all of those things. And you are not telling these people the truth right now.
Did you support Prop ten, Joe?
No.
Okay. A quick follow-up, Joe, on, on homelessness, because I didn't hear you talk about what Will said, which was. And Will, correct me if I'm paraphrasing you incorrectly, but Will said that he, he would keep the people, the homeless population. In the convention center into next year as long as we can, as long as we're able to. And that the bridge shelters are not a good solution going forward. What do you, how long would you keep the unsheltered population in the convention center and our bridge shelters? Should we go back to them or no?
I, I, I dislike the bridge shelters as well. I think we've all called on the bridge to nowhere. I don't think that's really a solution. It shows the failure of how we actually deal. It may make parts of downtown a little more attractive, but it doesn't deal with the humanity of homelessness. I have focused on the length of the pandemic, excuse me, how the pandemic affects us and how the economy affects us. And so I, I see this as kind of a future conversation, depending on how these things play out. I, I don't like the idea of the bridge shelters. Folks have to be somewhere. And as you know, the convention center has a relatively small capacity in terms of how many folks are in fact homeless. There are plenty of individuals that are on the streets right now. The good news is that we're actually starting to see some of the nonprofits step up to build the kind of housing that will address the needs of the homeless. So we'll start to see how those actually come together and make an informed decision at that time.
The McKinsey Consulting Group has made millions of dollars over the years by pointing out that local governments aren't like business, aren't like the private sector. And that they don't copy the best practices seen elsewhere. On housing, this is spectacularly true. In Great Britain and in Japan, prefab housing that is of much better quality than it was fifty years ago, costing less than a hundred thousand dollars a unit. Now takes up like fifteen percent or more of the market. A Japanese company is building a ten thousand unit village in Northern England right now at a unit cost of less than a hundred thousand dollars. When I brought this up the last time we talked to you guys, neither of you were enthusiastic. It just seems to me like there's obvious steps to take to bring down the cost of housing. And then a nine hundred million housing bond that pencils out at four hundred thousand dollars a unit is nuts. Reaction?
Okay, I'll jump in first. Chris, you know, I've done additional studies since that interview in which you pointed out. Alternative construction methods is certainly part of the solution to try to bring down the cost. We have seen some certainly, some creative areas. It is one component. The other component that we have is to look at the publicly owned land. And to be able to leverage publicly owned land to take the land cost out of the deal, which the city has consistently failed to do. MTS, thank goodness, has finally seen the light. It is looking at throwing in their parking lots as part of a, a program to build income restricted housing. And hopefully deliver at a lower cost. You know, we talk a lot about reducing the, the permits and the bureaucracy and developing market rate housing. But I don't hear too many people talk about reducing the bureaucracy and developing income restricted housing. The complexity that it takes to deliver that, the cost of getting the packaging, the financing to make those projects happen. Our additional incremental costs that we need to look at and trim. But the idea of modular housing, you know, we, folks have talked about shipping containers. There is a whole range of things that we could be looking at with the primary goal of how do we take limited dollars and deliver the maximum housing? And so, Chris, you're, you are on point. And we need to start taking a look at that and start meeting the needs of, of our most vulnerable San Diegans.
Will?
Couple of things about that. Forty-seven percent of our housing costs at this point are just regulatory costs, fees and delays and that sort of thing. And that actually doesn't even count the delays of three to ten years to get even a ten year to the apartment complex built. That's really where our problems come in. It's not that things are physically difficult to construct. That's not our problem. When we talk about prefab, and I'll tell you just where my skepticism comes in. I'm, you can hear it in my voice a little bit. I'm a southerner. I'm, you can hear it in my voice a little bit. I'm a southerner. You know, I've got family members who live in, you know, trailers. Not kidding. And those places are sold as like, oh, they're better than the last generation of them was. And after 20 years, they're all broken down and they're not, and they're not holding up and they're not holding that value. And here in America, we expect your house to hold value. And that's really where I have that skepticism. You know, if show me one that's 30 years old and is still functional, then maybe I'll believe that. But right now, what I've seen in my lifetime makes me very, very skeptical prefab. And any recent study that's going to come out about that, unless it's looking at places that were built 30 years ago, I'm going to have that same skepticism. But I am going to say, I agree with you. My reason that I alluded to for my skepticism on the, on the housing bond, well, I'll vote for it, but not rah rah enthusiastically, is because, yeah, $400,000 a unit is ridiculous for building affordable housing. It shouldn't cost more to build affordable than it costs to build market rate. And we need to figure out why that is. We need to get those barriers out of the way so that things aren't more expensive. And right now, right now, subsidized affordable includes 120% AMI in some cases, which is area median income. 100% area median income, just to make it explicit, is median income. It's the average person. It's 50 percentile. And when you have to subsidize just to build housing for the average person, then you have a real problem somewhere else in your system that that subsidy is not going to solve. So we need to address.
Warren Buffett owns the largest prefab construction business in America. He bought it within the last 15 years because he believes that in fact they are better. I believe in Warren Buffett.
That's, and that's, that's great. And you know, that one guy in Omaha can do that. And I wish them the best with his investment decisions, but but based on what I've seen, I'm going to have that skepticism. And I just don't think that people of Carmel Valley really want to put shipping containers in their backyards.
How, let me ask you, one of the biggest differences between you two, and I don't want to spend too much time on this because we've covered this quite a bit, as have others, but short term vacation rentals. That might be your biggest division. Joe, you told us earlier, you want to shut them down. Will, you said you support the car boat for Mission Beach and primary residence. So I guess is that, do you guys see that as your biggest difference? And and are those, are your positions kind of set in stone or tell us a little bit about that? And Joe, why don't you go first this time?
Sure. I don't want to shut them down. I just want the city to follow the law. I'm tired of the city picking winners and losers about which regulations are going to apply and which ones are going to enforce. We have a pretty bad history of that on a wide variety of issues and terms of short term vacation rules. You know, you can't talk about the housing issue and ignore the fact that upwards of 16,000 units are off the market. Think about what that means in terms of what our normal annual housing production is. It's a dramatic number. And whether it's 16,000 or 10,000 or any place in between, you can't continue to ignore them. You know, when you want to have a conversation about short term vacation rentals. And when Matt, you talked about getting off of our current positions, you know, I didn't start out with this position when I started fighting the short term vacation rental conversation several years ago. I have evolved into that. And I'm tired of us negotiating with ourselves in terms of what might be a compromise when the platforms are not actually coming at the table. Yes, there is a non binding MOU out there. I appreciate those parties that took the time to put that together. But it doesn't include Airbnb in that, that. And I don't really have confidence that the city can actually translate that MOU into actual ordinance that is enforceable and manageable. And so that's my skepticism with that, with that attempt. But I respect those parties who did that. And the fact is, if you're not willing to enforce the law, why are we bothering to actually create new laws? So we have to start from a baseline that says, we're going to enforce the law. And then we can have a conversation. I don't know where that conversation might go. But again, I've evolved to this point. I didn't start out this way, Matt.
Thanks, Joe. Will.
Well, I think that I want to address this in a couple of different ways. First of all, I think vacation rentals are something we need to make some sort of rule on so that we can get it done and move on. This is a San Diego special. Other cities have dealt with this successfully, and we have dragged this thing out for what, three, four, five years now? There is a proposal where the, the hotel workers union and the, and one of the big VRBO, Expedia, one of the big groups that actually does some of the STVRs have come to a place where they can knock down these, these rentals to, I think it's 0.7% of, 0.07% of the housing stock, which would knock down the number of total STVRs by, I think it's 70%. And a lot of folks rallied because Dr. Jen Campbell was, her office was involved in this, and those folks who are just anti never ever ever on the STVR front are trying to recall her now. And that's the reaction to the off, to the attempt to get this thing reduced by 70%, which I think is just, that's out of control. We need to figure out some solution to this problem that gets something done. And this, the closest attempt anybody's made is being rejected out of hand by some folks whose opinion, who are a very small number, whose opinions are very extreme. I think we as San Diegans can solve this problem, can make sure that we have a STVR solution that gets things done. Now, one place I will take issue is that this is the biggest difference between me and Joe. Anybody who told you in the last year that scooters and STVRs were the biggest issues that faced San Diego was not someone you want in a position of leadership. We have much larger issues in this town, and we managed to spend decades talking about seals, talking about the cross up on the mountain, talking about football teams that we know are going to leave town. And those things we chase our tails around prevent us from dealing with our real problems, which is the inequality in our city, poverty, education and housing. And those are the big issues. Those are the big issues we need to talk about. And I think as long as we are spending time saying, oh, the short term vacation rentals are the devil, and we can never make compromises with anybody to make an issue work for our neighborhoods and get enforcement for quality of life problems that we are actually happening. We need to solve those problems and move on. And these folks who anchor their issues and never allow a solution are not helping San Diego.
And to be clear, I wasn't saying this was the biggest issue. I was saying this was the clearest difference between you.
Right.
And I, Matt, if I could.
Want to respond to that? Sure. Thirty, thirty seconds, Joe. Keep it quick.
Sure. You know, I don't understand a lawyer who thinks enforcing the law is the wrong way that that we need new laws. We actually have the law, so I would expect people to believe in that. No, short term rentals and scooters are not the biggest issue, but those are the questions that keep coming up time and time again. And the fact is that a council member has to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. You got to deal with these quality of life issues in our neighborhoods because that's why, that's who's electing you. And you got to be able to tackle the big problems. I've been working on those big problems. I can only do so much as a part time volunteer. I want that job full time. And that's what I'm looking forward to do.
How, before we move on to a couple of other issues, let's ask, I want to ask the board members on housing and homelessness. Any other points you all want to raise?
One quick one. We get a lot of complaints from community planning groups that their voices are never heard. They make proposals, they weigh in on projects that are being done, and then they move to the council and are completely ignored. Do you think that's the case? And do you think these committees need more of a voice, more more means of getting their opinions heard?
Will, Will, you want to go first, Will?
And these are, they're advisory groups. Their, their opinions are frankly approved most of the time. That's the, the council doesn't really get into the weeds on most decisions they make. They and frankly, I think the council is grateful that a lot of those decisions that there was recommendations the CPGs make take a lot off of the plate of the council. So that is a lot of free labor that we really appreciate down there at the at the people on the council very much appreciate down there at CPG level. They are advisory, and when they, when they get reversed, they are generally on, on larger projects or more controversial things. And, you know, a, most judges, most trial court judges would love a reversal rate as low as the CPGs have at the city council. So I think those voices do get heard. Obviously, when, when a decision goes against you, you don't like it very much. But I think that, you know, we respect our CPGs. I think one thing we do need to do is make sure that our community planning groups represent our community. And right now, they don't really. Right now, the community planning groups are disproportionately older, disproportionately wider, disproportionately homeowners. About half the people in the city rent. About half, half the people in this district where a lot of homeowners are rent. And if you go to the planning groups in La Jolla, in University City in Carmel Valley, these people are working very hard. But there's some folks that are not in that room whose voices don't get heard. Younger people, renters, that sort of thing. And when you look at a room that's supposed to be making recommendations for our entire community and everybody is white and over 60, when half of the population is under 35 in that region, then you have a real problem. So we need to make sure that in order to make those policies that they're recommending work the right way, we need to make sure that those planning groups are representative of our communities. Now, I will return again to the point, they're advisory, they generally, their recommendations do get approved. But you know, sometimes they do get reversed. And I will, as a, as a council member, listen to those recommendations. Most of the time, the vast majority of the time, they're going to be the folks who knows what's going on in, on their street and on, with this house and with this development. And that's going to be listened to and it's going to get a lot of deference, but it's not going to all the time.
Joe.
Well, I'm glad to see my colleague has kind of come around on that. You know, I've obviously been probably the biggest cheerleader of our community planning groups. And what I've heard is that planning groups, in fact, do feel like their voices are being ignored. And of course, the development industry thinks that planning groups have too much power. So somewhere in there is, is the truth in there. You know, planning groups have struggled, and the fact that we don't have greater diversity is really a reflection of people that think it's a waste of their time. They have better things to do than sit on a planning group and sit through two, three, four hour meetings when they don't think they're really having any kind of impact on city decision making. And I think what we've seen, and I've been to most of the planning groups across our city. There are 42 of those planning groups, and they have 42 different personalities. Every community, every planning group is a little bit different because of the history of what's going on. The, one of the things that I like to point out is that one of the reasons that the planning groups make as much noise as they do, and especially the ones that have served on the planning groups for a long time, is they have the institutional memory of the broken promises where the city has failed to deliver. We promise infrastructure in our communities to support the new densities. We don't get that infrastructure. We have community plans that have very specific language that talk about what's unique about that community. And then we have a municipal code that's very generic, and there's quite a disconnect between that. And that is the heart of a lot of the issues that, that you hear about. Why do we have these community plan updates that have one kind of language and a municipal code that talks about it in a completely different direction? And I think some of the issues that have been raised about planning groups have highlighted very small instances that have affected. I can't help but notice for the past two years, people have been beating up on planning groups, trying to disband them or weaken them. And yet, when the midway planning group has something they like, suddenly the midway planning group is the voice of the community and we should listen to the planning group. So clearly there's a disconnect there. The last thing I'll say to wrap this up is that the city has really abandoned the planning groups. We used to have the city planners attend every meeting. If you look at the decisions that are being made by the hearing officer of the planning commission or even the city council, they have planners, they have the city engineers, they have a city attorney to help guide them in being an effective decision maker. The planning groups who are just volunteers from all walks of life really don't have any support and are doing the best they can. They get criticized because they don't have the right language, the right lingo, which is one of the reasons I jumped into the first place to try to level that playing field. The planning groups play an important part. They can always do better. Every institution can always do better. But I'm going to be very supportive. I'm very appreciative of Diane Kane and Chris Nielsen and Catherine Burton and Ray Ellis and Frisco White and Troy that are leading our current community planning groups here in La Jolla, excuse me, in District One, and will always be listening and have an open door to their input of how we can do better.
In 2016 and 2017, San Diego had a series of disastrous management failures. In 2016 and early 2017, we had Ash Street. We had the adoption of the surveillance tools that we didn't know were surveillance tools. And in 2017, we had the problem with hepatitis and that nobody denounced the county for not calling an emergency until the end of August. And all three of these events, we've allowed the mayor to get most of the blame. But it just seems to me, if you've got a city council of nine members, you've got a city attorney's office, where was everybody? So it just seems to me like this is not just a failure of fault. This is a gigantic collective failure by the people leading the sixth largest city in America. What would you say, had you been on the council at the time, would you guys have had the courage to stand out or to try to do the research to point out how terrible each of these three things were?
Well, Chris, I'd be.
Why don't we have, let's still Joe go first on this one.
Uh, sure. Great point, Chris. You know, in hindsight, I would have made all the right decisions, but just, you know, let's, let's get back to a serious conversation about this. You know, you're right. There were some really bad decisions made. It really talks about a, on one hand, it is about the strong mayor form of government, which we don't talk enough about, but the strong mayor actually can restrict the amount of information that city council members get to make some of these big decisions. How much of that played into that? You know, remains to be seen. We're doing a lot of investigative work. I'm appreciative of the independent auditor and the independent budget analyst that makes the city council much stronger in its work. But we have to do better. And you're right. It, we can, we like to find a single scapegoat to point our finger at. But it is the entire structure of city hall and how we operate and how we don't have the patience to take the hard look in terms of questioning what the staff is coming up with, what the mayor is proposing, and take the deep dive. I've got a track record being in the public eye for a number of years on boards and commissions where you've seen me be the lone voice in criticizing things. I sat on the Consolidated Plan Advisory Board, a terrible name for a very important board. And a number of times I voted no, because I didn't think staff had really made the argument that I could support. I'm not afraid to make those decisions, even in front of my planning group. I was not afraid to run counter to them. But it really takes that leadership to stand up. A great example of that is my leadership on the Community Planners Committee, where I inherited something that was very much opposed to city staff and turned them around to be much more thoughtful and partner with city staff. But I think we really have to rethink how the decision making process is done, what information is provided to the city council, what support they need in making these critical decisions. But your points are well taken. You know, the, the, the one last thing I'll say is that the silver lining, if you want to call it, out of the hepatitis is that it really has wakened the count, excuse me, the county of San Diego up to their responsibility for public health, for human services. And we've really started to see it's sea change. It's tragic that it took something like that for that to happen, but at least we're making, we're moving in the right direction. I'm certainly appreciative of that.
Will.
Chris, I think what you're getting at with this question is throughout the political system in San Diego, California, we have a deficit of leadership. We need people who will be able to take the unpopular position, to say something in front of a room that they're not going to like, to not change that answer when they get into the next room. And I've had a reputation as that person for a very long time in this town. As I've worked in, in the nonprofit sector, as I've tried to help people make deals in the private sector as a business attorney, and I'm the person that makes that call. When we have a city council that is not aggressive, that is not investigating and just has to take the mayor's word for things, sometimes you get stuck in that position. It is true. Sometimes you get stuck in that position. But what we need to have is leadership in the city council that the mayor's office, whoever the mayor is, and I, I do expect we'll have a pretty good mayor next time, however it comes out. We need somebody who will let the mayor know whether you're on the same side of the issue or not, we're going to need more to go on. I'm not going to make a decision based on just taking your word for something. Because that's not how I've lived any part of my career. And when you allow that, you know, guesswork, I'll take your word for it to happen. I've seen in my practice over the past 17 years since I graduated from Columbia Law that it works out badly because people, even if you don't double check them, if they know you might, are going to give you better information. So we need people to stand up. We need people that work in advance and don't just say no when the thing comes before the, before the council. And don't just grandstand, I would have known after the fact, but folks that do the work. that do the work to get the real issues aired. So we don't get distracted by your STVRs and your scooters and then we talk about our real objectives in this city. Now, when we talk about hepatitis, we talk about, uh, your, the, uh, Ash Street problem, we talk about the, the scooter enforcement, we talk about all these problems. We haven't got the folks that are standing up and saying, here's the priority. Here's where we need to show leadership. Here's what I need to know in order to vote for this. Here's what I need to know in order to say you can renovate this building, but it's fifty years old, we know it has asbestos in it, please don't screw that up. Right? We need that sort of leadership and I've been providing that my entire career. Uh, Joe talked about Consolidated Plan Advisory Board. I was the chair of the Consolidated Plan Advisory Board and with a, with a tenure that did ask those hard questions, uh, and in fact, uh, somewhat famously so. And so I don't knuckle under people. I did not come here all the way from Houston Heights, one of the poorest neighborhoods in Macon, Georgia, joined the Peace Corps because it was easy, go to Columbia Law because it was easy. I am not here to go up and sit on that dais for four years just to occupy a spot. What we need to ask ourselves as a city is, do we want somebody who's here for a season? We want somebody who's here for a reason. I'm here for a reason and I will not be just going along to get along. We're here to solve San Diego's big problems and make this a city our kids can live in.
Oh, that season reason line is pretty good, but I gotta be honest, we, we've heard council candidates say this for, for decades. And as Chris points out, people get in there and they make these decisions on streetlights or an Ash Street, you know, the list goes on. Uh, and on Ash Street, you're talking about taking an appraiser's word for something. If you're going to buy a house, if you, you're not, you're not going to say, tell me, you know, you tell me what it's, what it's worth. You tell me, you do your due diligence, I'm not doing any mine. Like how, you know, how does that, how does that happen? It's one thing, every candidate probably took that vote, said the same thing when they ran for office. How do we trust you guys that, that you would do that?
One thing that I think that, and that point is well taken, you know, everybody says that. Um, but you gotta look at people's history and that's, and that's where I've been and, and you look at, you know, how the positions have changed and remain consistent just during this campaign and you get kind of a view towards, uh, who's going to be more of a constant person. Uh, but what, one of the issues that I think is a real problem is in the strong mayor form of government, we've still got, even though you can't necessarily have the same level of communication with city staff, we've still got the same council staff structure that we had under, uh, the form of government that, you know, we could get better advice from the council, uh, from the city. So we probably need, uh, some staffing decisions to be made so that we have better resources in doing our own investigations at council level.
And, and to your point, Matt, you're right, that's the toughest part of a candidate is to make that commitment. Uh, and it's good to have a track record that people can look back and see when, uh, my work in the public eye, about what I've actually done, uh, and actually even during the course of this campaign, uh, a number of endorsements that, uh, I pursued and was not able to get because I stuck by my values, uh, because sticking by my values are more important than any one endorsement that I may or may not get. Uh, but I think there is a larger issue, uh, about the time pressure, uh, that, uh, elected officials go through. I have a term of office, what can I get done? Uh, even if it moves too fast or more fast and is really prudent, uh, to Chris's point, uh, we have to stop these short-term visions of how can I make myself look good, uh, in the four years, or perhaps if you're lucky, eight years, that, uh, you believe you're going to be in term, uh, and you're going to be in office. Uh, and I think that's one of the major problems we have. Everything is being rushed, uh, because of those artificial timelines. And we have to have elected officials that are saying, I'm here for the benefit of the city and the folks that live here. Uh, I'm going to be willing to make those hard decisions that may not bear fruit, uh, until long after I'm gone. Uh, and, uh, that's hard for an elected official to do, who's always thinking about what's that next office and I'm going to be running for, the next job I'm going to be pursuing. Uh, one of the things I'll throw into this mix is, uh, you can see the gray hair. This is, uh, probably the last thing that I'm going to do, uh, and so I'm not going to be hampered about, uh, where I'm going to go next. Uh, I'm going to be able to have those conversations, uh, that really makes those, uh, difficult decisions, telling people, as I have been, uh, over my past twenty years of public service, uh, what they needed to hear, um, and not necessarily what they wanted to hear. Um, and I think that's really the mark of, uh, leadership and the fact that I've been consistently asked, uh, to step up as leaders of numerous boards and commissions, uh, and been unwilling to kind of roll over, uh, just to kind of get along and move these things along. Uh, you know, we have this bizarre culture, uh, in San Diego where we seem to move either too fast or too slow. Uh, government has a pace that really does the due diligence to get these things right, but yet continues to move things along. Uh, we, we have to change the culture of how we as elected officials make our decisions. Uh, I'm looking forward to that challenge.
Thanks for the answer. Let's move away from the hypotheticals then to some things that you will get a vote on, starting with Sports Arena. Um, are you happy to come in, uh, with five minutes left in the fourth quarter and, and, uh, hand that ball to some staff member that's still, uh, on Kevin Faulkner's team? I mean, it seems that, that's where we're headed. Should, should, what do you think about the Sports Arena and, um, are you, uh, are you, do you like the, the, the plan that's currently got a lot of, uh, momentum in the mayor's office? Joe?
Joe, okay. Um, you know, I'm a little, we got two qualified bidders. They put good proposals, uh, on the table. They obviously came out very close, uh, in the scoring. Uh, I don't want to speak to the quality of either one of those, uh, efforts that goes at this point right now, uh, but what I would like to talk about, Matt, and, and I think you'll see where I'm going with this, is this is another failure, uh, in a real estate transaction by the city. Uh, we failed to put the best proposal on the table, uh, because we introduced this in, uh, the mayor's last year of office, uh, with two big unknowns. Uh, one, the thirty-foot coastal height limit that wasn't even on the ballot when those RFPs went out. Uh, and second, the very obvious thing that was being introduced by one administration and yet it was this next gen, uh, administration that was actually going to make a decision. Those are big red flags for anybody who thinks that they might want to participate this. And I suspect we lost out on a lot of good bids, uh, by folks who said, these are too much unknowns, too risky, we're not going to do this. Um, and of course, the pandemic came in and, and whether we weighed in with that. Uh, but a failure to say, we only got two qualified bidders on what is really a golden opportunity. Maybe we didn't reposition this, we missed our window by not starting this much, a few years ago, uh, let's simply place this, uh, in the hands of the next administration. Uh, the other part of it is a failure, uh, to take advantage of the publicly owned land to address the need for income restricted housing. Uh, I think I'm appalled that they only put in a ten percent requirement, a failure to take advantage, as I said, the one leverage, the city, most effective leverage the city has, which is to throw land into the deal and let those prospective bidders. Um, I would really, uh, all things being equal and with all, uh, due respect to the two bidders who put a lot of time and effort into this, uh, would like to see that proposal brought back. This is not a delay. This is starting over and doing the job right to serve our city, uh, the people who live here, uh, and, uh, get to a much better. Uh, how quickly we can do that kind of depends on the pandemic, because that certainly has a, a factor. We'll see the, uh, whether November, uh, the, the measure passes or not with height limit, uh, will now have this ensconced in a single administration. Uh, I suspect we're going to get more effective bidders. Again, due respect to those, uh, individuals who put a lot of time and effort into putting their bids together, but let's, let's do this right.
So to be clear, you would reopen the project, go back to square one? What would you do with the current proposal?
Um, I would keep them, uh, in the mix, but, uh, give them the news that we really got this off on the wrong start. This is a much bigger and better opportunity. Uh, they've seen what people like and don't like about their bids. They can certainly re, uh, resubmit that, uh, based on a new RFP. Um, you know, they're, I think that is the right thing to do with such a golden opportunity. We really want to get this right.
And, uh, before I go to you, Will, real, real quick on, uh, measure, on the height limit measure, measure, um, E, want to get that right. Are you, are you, are you a yes or a no?
I'm a yes on that. Uh, I think clearly the arguments are made about Midway. Uh, what folks can depend on is this is not going to be the beginning of the slippery slope, uh, in introducing such measures in our other coastal communities. Uh, that misery will stop at the, you know, western boundary of Midway and will not go uh, any further. Uh, but it is, uh, the right thing to do for this unique part of our town, so close to transit and our downtown area. I'm supportive of misery.
Thanks. And so Will, what, what, how, how would you handle the Sports Arena redevelopment?
Well, first of all, I'll answer the question. I am yes on Measure E. I think this is a, you know, nobody is looking at, uh, the Sports Arena area and thinking we need to, you know, preserve the land that includes lay girls and some of like the worst, you know, blight in our, uh, in our city. We really need to, this is a major opportunity very close to downtown, um, that we really need to, to revitalize and you can't see the coast from it anyway. So it's not really, there's, there's no reason it should have been included in the height limit in nineteen seventy-two in the first place. So, uh, I would support repealing Measure E. With respect to the, uh, plans as submitted, I've heard some people say this plan's better than the other one. We wish there was some imaginary thing out in the ether that, uh, would have been preferable. Uh, but what I haven't heard anybody say is there was anything improper about the process, it was illegal, this would actually be a, a bad plan, uh, for any of the reasons that are within the, the mayor's jurisdiction. We do have a strong mayor form of government. We don't want to have a strong mayor form of government. We can re, revisit that. But, uh, to say that the mayor doesn't actually have the ability to do things for the last year, or maybe now a year and a half or two years, that is the sort of paralysis that San Diego likes to wrap itself up in, so no decisions get made for decades at a time. And when you say, oh, we have to redo the whole thing, uh, and you give people the leverage to say, we have to redo the whole thing, uh, just because I don't like this particular plan, then nothing happens. And this is a city where too little has happened for too long. Now, as far as this plan that, uh, the mayor is advocating for or has chosen, um, yeah, I don't frankly think, I, I don't love it, it's fine. Um, but I think that, uh, you know, the mayor's mayor and we'll get a new mayor and we'll have the discretion to implement, uh, the plan however it's delivered to us. Um, and if anything was improper in the creation of that plan, we'll definitely investigate whether that's the case. I've heard no such suggestion though, that would suggest to us that we should go back and redo something that nobody's actually said was wrong, they've just said they don't like the outcome of.
So you have full faith and confidence in the mayor and his real estate assets department?
Well, no, but unless, unless we, uh, have some reason to believe, which, you know, folks are, folks are looking into, I'm sure we're being very diligent, and if we find some reason to believe that that was, uh, done improperly, then, then I think that, uh, the mayor's able to, to go forward with that decision. But if we just say, oh, I don't like this guy, I don't think he does a very good job typically, um, well, then we should get rid of him. We should remove him from office. There are ways to do that. We did it with the last guy. And, but, uh, if we're just going to paralyze the city for, uh, a couple of years because, uh, we think that a decision made in twenty sixteen was bad, I don't see how that allows San Diego to govern itself, frankly.
Is it a couple of years or would it really have been a few months? I mean, the point that Joe makes is well taken, which is, we don't know the height limit question, um, which, you know, I guess that's lesser of a point than we're in between mayoral administrations. We have administration coming in that could do something totally different.
Yeah.
Which is kind of getting back to my analogy of football in the fourth quarter, getting, you know, it's just, it's an interesting way to do government, uh, make government decisions on what is now that STSU West has settled, the largest, most prime piece of city land that we have.
Yeah, and I think that, I think the real estate assets is, and really all of our, all of our troubles in the city government are just shot through with a lot of dysfunction, uh, throughout. I don't think that's not going to be the case on, on December fifteenth, um, when new people get inaugurated. Uh, I think it's going to take a while to fix, but if we say we know, don't make any decisions, and I know I read your editorial about this and, and you guys think it should be on hold, but, uh, and this is, you want an example of me disagreeing with the panel? Here we are. Um, I, I just don't think we can put things on hold because our instinct in San Diego has been for decades, delay, 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 delay. And I don't have a dog in the fight on like who gets a bid and who doesn't. We need to start getting things done. And unless there's some reason to think that this plan is in some way improper, it is within the jurisdiction of the mayor's office. And if people vote for Measure A, that Measure E, uh, then it's something we should, uh, implement. I think going back and revisiting decisions that we don't have reasons to think are improper is, uh, is not a way to move ourselves forward, it's a way to chase our tails.
Let me, I must say about another big, uh, uh, project or, or, or part of San Diego life, um, Hassan Akrata and, and Sandag, he came in, um, people were very optimistic about his tenure. Um, he had a very ambitious plan and here we are in the last couple of weeks, exactly where we were a couple of years ago, talking about Sandag scandals, plural. Um, so do you guys have trust in Sandag? And, and, you know, how can this, how, how can this organization put a measure forward that's going to cost a lot of money and take a lot of tax dollars? Um, when, you know, we, we keep talking about Sandag and scandals in the next, uh, in the same sentence. And shout out to Steve Brain, who's Sunday Cartoon on this was on point.
It was very good. Um, I would say that, uh, Sandag is a, is an organization within a community that's in a major transition. Uh, we have built a city for cars over the last seventy years and we're going to have to figure out a way to get people around the city, uh, with options so you and I can get where we want to go, when we want to get there. For most people, that's going to continue to be the car for the next couple of decades. For some people, it might not be. And for some people, it already isn't. And so we need to, I, I think it's good that we have a, a, a bolder vision, somebody that's bringing, uh, new issues for discussion. I talk to people up here in Carmel Valley, they love to have a bus up and down Delmar Heights Road and some other light rail. As far as the organization of Sandag, um, I would prefer to be able to have confidence in, more confidence in that organization than I think anybody, uh, currently has. But right now, it's a little bit at war of itself, because you've got a new guy with the big vision and an old staff, um, and some of those folks are not getting along very well. And, you know, that's, some of that's a, a natural progression of a transition. Uh, and we as a community, and you can tell when you go to those board meetings, we don't necessarily have a consensus on how we want to go forward. There's a, uh, not just a policy clash, but a culture clash there, because it's a very big county. And so we need to be, uh, aware that, you know, this is going, not going to be without its hiccups. Um, it's not going to be without controversy, but we need to show leadership and, and really think about not what this organization is doing, uh, for the next, uh, year, but what our region is going to be doing for the next several decades.
Do I take that to mean you support his five big moves?
I support the, the five big moves in, in concept, I think would be, uh, very useful. Um, whether, uh, in light of what we've seen recently, that's who's going to be implementing the five big moves or something like it. I do think we need to transition and give ourselves options for how, better ways to get around the town.
Joe, what are your thoughts on, on Sandag?
Sure, I mean, try to kind of get back to your, your question, you know, as, as an engineer, I'm very excited about the five big moves as a, a lover of transit and the need and the importance of transit in our future, uh, I'm very excited about. As a taxpayer, I'm a little bit concerned, because at the end of the day, uh, this plan doesn't go forward unless we have the confidence of the public, uh, to support the bound measures that are going to be needed. And, you know, what are we talking about? Hundred and seventy-seven billion, um, dollars to, to be able to do that. We saw that, uh, loss of confidence in the last, uh, attempt by Sandag. Uh, and we can't keep getting embroiled, uh, on these, uh, side issues, which are incredibly important, uh, because they build confidence in, in whether government is operating, because if this kind of issue is exposed, uh, what else is happening out there? Uh, you know, the, they're much like the painful process that Sandag went through, uh, as you mentioned a few years ago, and needed to kind of clean up their act. Uh, there was, uh, some important changes made, uh, some, uh, real changes in, in staffing, uh, at the upper levels at Sandag. Uh, we needed this to be dealt with immediately, get through this audit, get through these questions about, uh, contributions to, uh, campaign, you know, election campaigns, uh, because we need to get back to the important questions. Uh, the reality is that we've ignored these things for too long, they keep getting more and more expensive. Um, and, uh, so I, I, I want them to clean up their act quickly. I, I think with that, it's probably the most important thing that Sandag can do right now is just get these things off the table, restore the confidence. We can't get the votes, uh, that we need, uh, if people are suspicious about the operations of this government or any government. government or any government. And right now, I don't think we have a lot of confidence in Sandag. We don't have a lot of confidence even in the city of San Diego to be able to pass much needed bond measures that will be coming up to address some of our unmet needs. So I, I want to see them just clean up that act and get that back to the real conversations we need to have, what our city and our region's future looks like.
A big part of those moves had to do with climate change, which, you know, eight months ago, which is what was the biggest issue on, on the planet and may be again one day, although there are others we're talking about now. But, you know, the, the Climate Action Plan, lauded by some, criticized because some of its details are hard to meet, but legally binding. So what would you do to kind of look at the, you know, open up the hood, look under the hood and see where we need to change in order to hit those goals? What do you see as the places where San Diego can make some changes and should make some changes? Or do you think that the current marks and measurements and benchmarks are the appropriate ones? Joe?
Sure. We can really divide, from my perspective, the Climate Action Plan into three different parts. One, we met some of our goals just because of external factors that we didn't really have to do anything with. Some of the state mandates helped us achieve some of our goals. The second part was the CCE that we talked about earlier. That's a huge part that we will be moving forward. We want to do that carefully and thoughtfully, but I see that we're on the right path in that direction. And then there's really that third part that really will start to cause changes in the general public. And I don't think we've done a good enough job to really inform the public of what's coming up next, nor built consensus about why this is important for us as a city to actually meet these goals. And the other thing that, you know, we, I don't know if we got the budget to actually update the Climate Action Plan. We still need to have an implementation plan that actually, I look at the Climate Action Plan as a series of goals. We need an implementation plan that actually shows how we will get there, as well as a budget of what we're going to need to be able to achieve that. As I mentioned earlier, the pandemic, one of the silver lightings out of the pandemic is that it may cause us a shift to push more people to be able to operate out of their homes, which is an effective part of meeting and reducing the transportation greenhouse gas component that doesn't have any costs associated with that. In fact, may allow businesses to operate more efficiently. And then the, the last part is, you know, we're going to do what we believe because we're going to be leaders in this conversation about climate action. But we're not going to be able to totally stop the impacts of climate change. And so we need to get busy with an adaptation plan and start to bring that forward in terms of what it's going to look like when some changes actually manifest. We're already seeing the fires that have taken a dramatic change for the worst. And we can see that continuing more and more. Those minor changes in temperature make a dramatic change in the humidity levels of our soils and our plants, making them much more vulnerable to the horrific fires that we're seeing. And it may change in terms of how we operate, not so much in the city, because we've kind of locked in our urban boundary, but really making sure that we really are not putting more folks in harm's way for the greater risk of fires that we're seeing. So it is going to take leadership. It's going to take some candid conversations with the public. We have to lead to them in this conversation. We have to show why it's important. Certain organizations are doing a magnificent job. They can't do all the heavy lifting by themselves. I was very proud to be the second person, Nicole, of course, was the first person to start challenging the city in our community plan updates and tying them to actually meeting the goals of our Climate Action Plan. And we did that, what, about four years ago? And so that was a sea change in the conversation that I was proud to be part of. And that's just one of many elements that will do that. We have to keep that sustainability department going and robust and well-staffed, and make sure that we continue to lead in these conversations and continue to make the hard conversations with, with San Diegans about what's coming up next.
Thanks, Joe. Will?
Well, when we talk about our climate crisis, I think that you say, you know, maybe it's not the biggest thing. It is, it is. I walked outside the other day and the sky was orange, or at least a dark yellow. I've seen pictures of it being orange or other places. That's climate change. We're watching it today. And we're watching it today because we've structured everything in our society towards consumption of fossil fuels. But we have better ways of doing things. We have, you know, solar prices come down by more than they're projected to all the time, every year consistently for decades. What we've found, unfortunately, Climate Action Plan sounded like fantastic idea. What we found, unfortunately, we're seeing studies now where climate plans don't have any meaningful effect in actual carbon reduction to this point. So cities, and I think the study was actually done in Europe, cities with climate plans are, do about the same as cities without them. And I think the reason for that is climate plans are a great way to say rah rah, I'm your climate guy, I passed this plan. But then you don't have the hard conversation about whether we put an apartment building near this transit stop or a transit stop through this corridor or a bus line through a neighborhood. And when we don't have those conversations that are difficult, we just postpone them. And these goals get to be where they're big and scary things that just approach. I think last time I was here, Chris asked me about the, the bike share, the mode share was a 15, 35% by 2035, 15 by 2035.
Eighteen.
And, right, eighteen. And so, you know, people don't think that's possible because we haven't made the, the hard leap to make that first step. We just said, well, that's the plan out there. Unless you do things like put those separated bike lanes in and give people options and show them that it's successful, then just having a plan is like having a plan to, you know, go to the gym and lose weight. You gotta actually go and you gotta go lift the weights. And that's something that I think the, when we talk about climate action plans or adaptation plans, gets lost in there because we actually are going to have to have hard conversations about how we're going to have to move people around the city a different way. And I've been heartened that we've got a different sort of mindset arising. When I go talk to, we can't canvass now, we can't go door to door now. When I go talk to voters in University City, La Jolla, Carmel Valley, there is a recognition that we actually would like some different options. We have people aging in place that can't drive at night that would like some ways for them to get around safely when they want to go, where they want to go, when they want to get there. And we offer those options in a competent way that works and is safe and effective, then folks will start taking those options. And I think that, I think the CCA, the Community Choice Energy with 100% renewal by 2035 is a great idea. I think I'm a little skeptical of biting off also the municipalization chunk at the same time, which we don't have a good plan for, for our power lines. I don't think that's a great idea. But when we take the steps, it's better than if we say we have a plan for later.
Thank you. And we're over time, but I want to give board members a chance to ask any final questions that, that they may want to ask.
I just have one very, very brief question, and I'm hoping you can answer it in one sentence each. There are approximately 31% Latinos here. I think the percentage is actually higher myself, but what will you do as, as a city council member outside of your district, including, to make life better for Latinos here?
Joe, you want to go first?
Sure. You know, when I started my campaign, I'm not, I'm going to use two sentences. When I started my campaign, I identified District One priorities and citywide priorities. And one of the top three was social equity. And it was my commitment, my promise to work with the council offices in Districts Four, Eight, and Nine to be a supporter and a collaborator and a partner to ensure that our traditionally underserved communities get the greater attention in terms of infrastructure, city services, whatever they need, whatever they've identified, they have the lived experiences. So I'm prepared to actually commit to that. What's one of the reasons I made that a priority in my, one of my priorities in my citywide priorities.
Will?
Yeah, I think this is the superior question for San Diego, because I will tell you, I've described where I'm from. San Diego's not the most segregated place I've ever lived, but it's the least aware of how segregated it is, about how separate our communities are. So I think it's incumbent upon everyone, including the folks who are running the council office in District One, you got to have Spanish-speaking members of your staff. You have to have a diverse staff. So you have folks from, not just from District One, but some folks who are on your staff from outside District One, so that when those conversations come up, they can say, hey, actually, this is something we need to be aware of, that it might not have occurred to you. So a diverse staff, an attitude towards San Diego that makes us a single city. We are divided. We are sometimes not aware of how divided we are just in our day-to-day lives. But we need to knit ourselves together because letting these divisions just fester and letting people be, you know, imagining people to be different in some other part of town is what has created this massive weight that's really tearing America apart right now. And we need to fix that problem here in our city. And we need to do that by, by knitting our community together, by integrating our neighborhoods, by making this place that all of our kids can live together.
Thank you.
I have one follow-up. During the planning group session, Joe, you said something like, I'm glad my colleague has come around on this. I wondered what you meant, and then I wanted to see if Will had a response.
Sure. Well, his comment today, I seem to be much more supportive of planning groups than I've heard at forums and other venues. I've always been a cheerleader of community planning groups and the importance of them. Everybody that I, or folks when I talk to, said I, the message they get is that he is not supportive of those local voices in the communities. So I'm just sharing what I've heard personally over the past, past year.
Well?
Yeah. Well, I have a good deal of skepticism about how representative these groups are. I think that they do some work that, again, as I said, their, their rate of things getting approved, the way they want them, is pretty high. It's extremely high. But I think our community planning groups do need reform. I think that the more we put discretion into these processes, the further we get from rule of law, the more we get to the point where the, the question isn't how much you're, how much you're providing the community, but how much you're kind of gaming the system when you put more, more system to game in there. So as long as our community planning groups are trying to become more representative and trying to get younger, more diverse voices involved, we're going to have good support for those community planning groups. But I think that we definitely need aggressive reform to make sure our planning groups really do represent our communities. And I represent, I, I, there was an implication there that I didn't respect local voices. That's all we're doing. This is local politics. That's why I go door to door and talk to people. And I learned, as I was talking to people, that sometimes the folks in those planning groups are not representative of our local voices, and that's why I have that skepticism. So we need to repair that process because I don't think it works the way that it should and that it could to make San Diego a better place for all of the people that live here.
Thanks, Abby and gentlemen. Any other questions? Since we're in the interest of time, why don't you, we're going to give you each two minutes for closing statements. Tell us why the board and really why voters should support you. And Joe, why don't you go first?
Okay. Well, thank you for having me today. I certainly appreciate the conversation. You know, a lot has changed since our first interview nine months ago. Today, we face a pandemic and an economic crisis along with local and national focus on racial inequality. You know, dealing with all these issues is going to require tough decisions from the new mayor and city council. Decisions that must be driven by fact-based conversations while ensuring that all stakeholders are at the table. For nearly two decades, I have been driving such discussions in the public eye. As you know, I've sat on nearly 30 local committees, planning groups, city boards, and commissions. But the real story is that time and time again, I was asked, appointed, or elected to lead such organizations. City leaders and San Diegans look to my leadership because I do the homework. I respect all input, and I'm an honest broker in building consensus. And I actually understand how the city works. These are the qualities that needed to convert contentious conversations and move our city forward. Sitting as the next city council member is a natural extension of what I've been doing for the past two decades, collaborating with stakeholders from all backgrounds and points of view to benefit the community as a whole. My agenda is the agenda demanded by our city and its residents and businesses. This is an opportunity that is not a political launching point for me. My promise of spending the next four years, and if I do a good job, eight years, focused on meeting the needs of the city I love. Focus on the job you're hiring me to do, not what might come next. Our city faces significant near and long-term challenges. Now is not the time to be electing armchair quarterbacks, offering bold visions and promises that will never materialize. No, we need leaders with actual experience dealing with the city on a range of issues, who understands how the city works, and more importantly, knows what the city is doing wrong and how it can operate better and more efficiently. My experience, my track record, and my background show that I am that person. Thank you again to the board for this opportunity. Stay safe, stay healthy.
Thanks, Joe. Will?
San Diego is a place that I've come to after a great deal of life experience, knowing that not every community is this good. We have it pretty good here, but we can have it better. And I've watched this town chase its tail around some ridiculous issues for a long time. We argued about that football stadium for 20 years, and we did not have the leadership to just say, it's time to let it go. They're definitely worth more in LA. And that's an example of why I'm running for this office, because right now, we have a lot of crises in the city. We have crises that we've not faced down. We have not built enough housing for people in this town. We have not got good paying jobs for most of the folks in this town. And when we raise our children here, because I worked, I worked really hard to get this little condo in Carmel Valley that I live in. I worked hard to get here. And my son, I don't know if he can live here when he graduates from high school or college. And I know he won't be able to afford the rent, and he's going to be staying here for the next few years. Right now, in America, half of people between 18 and 29 live with their parents right now, more than half, which is more than it was in the depression. And that's because a lot of long-term issues that we have not dealt with, and the way things have worked and the people that have been involved have not gotten it done. Now, I have been involved in this community for a long time, in 12 years in my Rotary Club. I was a founder of the San Diego Leadership Alliance. I was a founding board member of the American Constitution Society here. I have done a lot of work advising nonprofits, giving free advice to nonprofits, never, never taking money to participate in this political system because I keep those lines very clear. So you never have to know who I'm representing. So I am here on behalf of this community, on behalf of all of us who want our kids to grow up in this town and be able to stay here, who want us to have a healthy society that's not two economies and two sets of types of housing for people, that we can be one San Diego, we can grow together, and we can be a community. That's why I'm here. I think we need this leadership. I think that the fact that I've been endorsed by a bipartisan coalition of Republican and Democratic, former and current elected officials, and, you know, labor groups and business groups, that's because I've put those people together to have them share a vision for how we're going to move into the future that's different from the way we've always done it. The 30 committees and the, and the, you know, chasing our tails and discussing and endlessly revisiting issues just so that we don't make any progress. We need leadership in this town. I'm running to provide that leadership.
Thanks to you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.